I was waiting for the red light. Thank you, sir. And good evening, everyone. This is the Planning Commission meeting for February 16th. This is the meeting from January that was moved to tonight because of technical difficulty. So it's as if this meeting is starting from scratch. So anything that occurred the last meeting is going to be talked about in its entirety tonight. My name is Paul Conover. I'll be, I'm the Planning Commission Administrator for Calver County, and I'll also be acting as the moderator for this meeting tonight. I'd like to let you know this meeting is being recorded, both video and audio, for recording purposes. For those attending virtually or on your phone, please keep yourself muted or to ensure no interruptions to the evening. For those of you calling in, if asked to speak, you can mute and unmute yourself by using buttons on your cellphone or by dialing star six. For those on your computer, if you ask or asked to speak, you can mute and unmute yourself and your audio by moving your mouse, then using the buttons on the toolbar in the bottom left-hand corner of your screen. You can also mute and unmute yourself by using keyboard shortcuts. And for Windows, you press Alt+A, and on Mac, you press Command+Shift+A. When questions or comments are requested of the public, those attending in person will be asked to speak first, and those attending virtually will speak after. If you are attending virtually and would like to ask a question or make a comment, please go to the comments icon on your Zoom page and type your comment into that section. If you are attending via phone and would like to ask a question or make a comment when asked, please use the raise hand function. Finally, please say your name every time you speak for the benefit of those calling in who cannot speak. With that, Commissioner Jones.
Good evening. I'm Steve Jennings, Chair of the Calver County Planning Commission. It's February 16th, 2022. This is a hybrid meeting, meaning we have people on Zoom and we have people in person. So welcome, everyone. Before we continue forward, I want to do a check. I've been getting feedback. Let's do a check to make sure everything's working in the background.
I can hear you, but it is muffled a little bit.
Okay. Okay. Lisa, is this still muffled to you?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know if it's the microphone distance or a problem with the technology.
Okay.
We'll do the best we can, Lisa. Is that a little better?
Yep, I can hear you just a little. I mean, I can understand you.
Okay.
Just not sure how the public is hearing it, if it's the same for them.
Thank you. So as you know, Lisa will be virtual, Commissioner Williams. With that, we'll take roll call. Vice Chair Bueller.
Here.
Commissioner Kernan.
Here.
Commissioner Freeland.
Here.
Commissioner Tui.
Here.
Commissioner Holler.
Here.
And Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Okay. With that, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Please stand, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, Mr. Conover, do we have something that needs to be proposed for the agenda?
Item three is action on proposed agenda. There is a request from the applicant for item 7B, which is CSPR-138164, the Prince Frederick Crossing Phase Four waiver. He would request that that item be moved to earlier in the meeting. I could read his email if you'd like for the reasons, but we request that it be moved right after item five.
Commissioners, do I have a motion to change?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation or make a motion that we move said item to 5A.
Motion by Commissioner Tui. Do I have? Second by Commissioner Freeland.
Question, question.
Please.
It would not be 5A, would it?
Thank you. Yeah, it would be 7A, just moved after item five.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I will second that motion.
Well, now we have two seconds.
Okay.
So, but we'll go with Commissioner Kernan. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Mr. Conover.
That moves us on to item four, action on the summary of actions from the December 15th, 2021 meeting. This is item 4A.
Commissioners, have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept summary of actions as written.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tui, second by Commissioner Kernan. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yeah.
Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Conover.
Commissioners, that moves us on to item five, which is recognitions of persons attending the meeting. Attending this evening, representing the County Planning and Zoning Office are Mary Beth Cook, Director, Rachel O'Shea, zoning planner, who's attending virtually, Jenny Plummer Welker, AICP, long-range planner, Tamara Blake Wallace, principal planner, and Olivia Vedotto, Planner Three. Also in attendance with us is John Mattingly, providing legal counsel, and Becky Parkinson, serving as recording clerk, and I believe Chris Hall from DPW will be attending us for one of the items as well. That moves us on to the item that you had just moved in the agenda, item 7B, which is CSPR-138164, the Prince Frederick Crossing Phase Four waiver request. And presenting this evening is Olivia Vedotto. Olivia, and I'll have your presentation up in a minute.
And I, Steve?
Yes.
I would like to recuse myself from this presentation.
Okay, let's get, Paul, can we get her put in a waiting room, please?
Put her in a, yep, I can put her in a breakout room.
We'll see in a few minutes, Lisa.
Okay, thank you.
Is there something on your screen, Commissioner Williams, that you need to accept? I can't hear you, sorry.
We can't hear you, Lisa.
I'll just leave the meeting and then rejoin. Will that work?
Just give me one more sec, because you should be in room two right now and not in our room.
Lisa, what Paul's trying to ask you is if there is a button that's popping up on your screen telling you to, no, okay.
One second.
Yes, now it is.
Okay. Okay, she's off.
She's off. Olivia.
All right, good evening, everyone. So this is for CSPR-138164 conceptual site plan for Prince Frederick Crossing Phase Four townhouses. This is a request for a waiver on a project that you have not seen yet. However, there is a conceptual site plan and a preliminary subdivision plan that are submitted, and both are under review and on the agenda for next week's Planning Commission meeting. The property is located in the Prince Frederick Town Center within the Forest District and is Phase Four of the existing Prince Frederick Crossing development that currently consists of townhouses and single-family homes. Per the Calver County zoning ordinance, 3-2.04, townhouses are a conditional permitted use within the Forest District, provided that the dwelling units are part of a comprehensively designed community where 30% of the dwelling units are single-family detached, 30% are single-family attached, and 30% are multifamily, and the remaining 10% may be any of the above. The Planning Commission may waive this requirement if it can be demonstrated that the proposed development will contribute to a housing mix within the town center as a whole that is roughly equal to the required housing mix on the site. So the applicant is requesting a waiver of this requirement as the proposed 21 townhouses contribute to the housing mix within the Prince Frederick Town Center. Currently, within the town center boundary, the residential units consist of single-family homes, townhouses, and apartments. Now, this has been requested and approved for previous phases of development for Prince Frederick Crossing that consisted of townhouses and single-family units. The recent residential multifamily development of Beechtree and Calvert Hills apartment projects resulted in over 300 units, and that helps to provide a more balanced percentage of the single-family detached, single-family attached, and multifamily units within the Prince Frederick Town Center. Staff recommends approval of the waiver request as the overall residential development within the Prince Frederick Town Center is currently a mix of single-family detached, single-family attached, and multifamily units. If approved, a note shall be added to the site plan with the approval date and any conditions. So the engineer is going to give you a brief presentation as well, but I will just, real quick, the plan that is on the screen right now is the site plan that you will see next week for the townhouses. As you can see, it is right off of 231 in Prince Frederick Boulevard, right behind the area that will be a future commercial site. And like I said, that will be coming to you. The other screen that I had, Paul.
One second.
So I tried to give as much of a visual of the Prince Frederick Town Center area without it being so small that you couldn't see. So you can see that there are a lot of higher-density developments and areas that have not been developed. Unfortunately, on this map, it does not show the Beechtree or Calvert Hills. If I had a pointer, sorry. But we're all familiar with the Prince Frederick area, so there is that mix of the single-family and the multi and detached. So after the presentation by the engineer and any questions, the next steps for the Planning Commission would be to consider one of the following options: approval with the conditions as listed above as recommended by staff, approval with modification to conditions recommended by staff, deferral if the Planning Commission requires additional information prior to action, or denial of the project, which will require the applicant to make substantive design changes and resubmit to planning and standing for agency review prior to consideration by the Planning Commission. But before that, I will turn this over to Nelson Rocho of Bay Engineering for him to give you a little bit more detail on the project and the overall Prince Frederick area.
Thank you, Ms. Olivia.
You go to the table if you'd like, or you could stand.
If you don't mind. My name is Nelson Rocho. I'm with Bay Engineering, a professional engineer, and I'm representing Chris Lee on this project. And so Olivia just went through the code and the requirements of the code. When the project was originally developed, and this is Prince Frederick Woods, then called Prince Frederick Crossing, which we now have Prince Frederick Crossing Phase Four. With the original memo dated November 15th of 2005, it was condition number 10. It stated the Planning Commission granted a waiver, meaning the minimum mixed-use residential percentage is noted in the chapters as referenced, because the proposed development will continue to the housing mix in the town center as a whole. This is roughly equal to the required house mix on the site. And for a single-family detached, that at least 50% of the length of the building is 20 feet wide, which are our buildings are, and excluding porches. As proposed, approximately 63.33%, including R1, of the residential units consist of single-family detached, and approximately 36% of the units consist of single-family attached. There are no multifamily units currently proposed. So that was the original condition on that date. With our proposal, and you know, and to make it short and get it simple, but what's happened is our units are approximately 20 feet. They're actually 22 foot wide, so we meet the condition, and they're 42 foot deep. The additional 21 townhouse units would change the percentage from previously to 56.7% for the single-family and 43.3% for the other use, the attached units, for a total of 201 units throughout the Prince Frederick Crossing development proposed. So the balance is, it actually balances out on our project proposed. Olivia mentioned that overall, in Prince Frederick, we've had, obviously, 96 units in Calvert Hills, 247, these are apartments, 247 units that was in Beechtree. And I did do a, I did do a check, I guess, being an engineer, I couldn't let it go because I wanted to know kind of how close the percentages were. And these are rough, but single-family attached, and this is within the Prince Frederick Town Center. I have a little Excel spreadsheet that I could always send Olivia, and she can share with the board later. But basically, between, you have Chaplain Place, Prince Frederick Crossing, these are all single-family attached or townhouses. Oak Tree Landing, Prince Frederick Crossing, which has both types, Petusac Commons, which is proposed, so I added these to the numbers. And then Prince Frederick Villa, which is, you know, an early project that was done right there. It's about 422 units, okay, which the total units of all these is about 12,057, so it's 34%. If I look at multifamily apartments, and condos are included, because we have Westlake, there are condominiums. So Calvert Hills, it would include Calvert Hills, Prince Frederick Villa apartments, because it was split that project between those two. Beechtree Apartments, and then Silverwood Apartments, it's about 601, so it's about 48% of the total. So actually, what we have, the least amount of, which we all, is a single-family. And so I counted, I counted in developments, Brightwell Village, Southgate, Gray in Court, and then Prince Frederick Crossing, which has a single-family. And then I estimated about 50 that are just spread out. I kind of discounted the ones, actually, I probably could have counted it, but there's a lot of businesses, there were houses that are converted, so I guesstimated, I left them out. So I could have fluffed the number up, but I said, let's call it 50. And that comes out about 20%. So we're looking at about 34, 48, and 20% for the mixes. So the mix of what overall is wanted to be achieved for Prince Frederick Town Center is historic. We're closed. The single families, obviously, are the most difficult for me. There's a selling point, the mass of them, you know, and so forth. So they always, we'll be lagging as far as a product, let's call it that kind of thing. But anyway, so that's what our request is. We think we're meeting the percentages. I think we're within what, for the project itself, it's well within that breakdown. And overall, with the county, with, overall, the Prince Frederick Town Center, we, I think we're meeting the intent of the requirement. So unless there's some questions, that's all I have.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah. Olivia or Nelson, either one. Would Prince Frederick Crossing stand on its own merits without counting the units in, what were the two? Calvert Hills and Beechtree?
Yeah, yeah, it would. Yeah, because, because those two, Beechtree's 247, Calvert Hills is 96. So what would happen is, oh, yes, we do math on my feet. So that's 300. It would actually, yeah, the balance would, if you take those units out, let's say, for example, the balance would be like 30, 30, and still about 20 or higher, because the percentage is down. So actually, you take those out, the percentages would actually be much more balanced without the apartments. To be honest, that's where the numbers would fall.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioners, any other questions from anybody? Any comments? Any motion? Don't be bashful.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve with the conditions as listed above as recommended by staff.
Motion by Commissioner Tui.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Kernan. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Commissioner Tui.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams has recused himself. Motion carries with what we have.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll let Commissioner Williams back in before we go on to the next item.
Paul, can you do me a favor? There's a box on that TV there, sir. It says your name, Paul Conover. I don't know why it's.
I don't have, I have these two TVs.
Okay, yes, sir.
Sorry, Daryl, you know who's talking?
It looks like there's a, maybe you can click an X on it to get it to go away, but I don't know what computer you can do that. There, it's gone. There you go. It's magic.
There you go. So there's a time period for the request to close the room unless Lisa clicks the button. We're just waiting for Lisa to click the button and come back earlier. There she goes.
Just getting ready to call.
There she is. Yeah, Commissioner Williams is back on the meeting.
Can you hear us, Lisa?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Okay, we're good?
We're good.
Mr. Conover?
That brings us on to item six, which is long-range planning. There are three items under this number today. First item is item 6A, the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan Update. Presenting this evening is Jenny Plummer Welker, AICP, long-range planner. And Jenny, I'll be doing your PowerPoint for you.
Thank you. Good evening. Jenny Plummer Welker, long-range planner with Planning and Zoning. I'm joined this evening by Tamara Blake Wallace, principal planner, Mary Beth Cook, both in the room, and then Carolyn Sunderland, Deputy Director of Planning, joining virtually. And then Chris Hall from Department of Public Works, Water and Sewer Division, will be here for part of the Q and A section later. In the presentation, so tonight's discussion is a continuation of the Planning Commission's special meeting from October 26, 2001. You received in advance of tonight's meeting the memo from staff dated February 3rd with two attachments. The first attachment was the memo from the January 26th meeting, and then tonight's slides. The memo from January 26th included four attachments: the summary and staff's analysis of the comments that were received on the July 2021 draft plan. It's an excerpt of Chapters Two and Three. It doesn't include everything from October 26th, since you already went through most of that. And the actions that you did take on the Chapter Two are annotated with the action that you took for those particular items. So we will continue tonight on two and three. It also included the attachment of the development capacity analysis. It's a memo from Michael Baer from Maryland Department of Planning in 2017 that was written to Carolyn Sunderland. And that, the state requires local jurisdictions to do development capacity analysis on a periodic basis. And so that was the one from 2017. It's based upon the existing zoning at the time, and the county zoning and town center zoning has not changed dramatically since then. It also includes attachment three, the Prince Frederick Residential Density Analysis that staff had done with the GIS Technology Service staff and the January presentation slides. We'll be working off the February presentation slides this evening. So you previously received the public comments that were received through October, through September 1st, and then the Planning Commission extended that comment period through October 1st. Those are part of your special meeting packet. And then, so tonight's summary and analysis is only six pages versus the 23 pages that you were looking at in October. So if we can move on to the next slide, please. And I want to emphasize that staff has made no changes to the draft July 2020 plan other than filling in Chapter 11, pages 11 through 16 and 11 through 19, identifying the responsible parties that had been admitted, and that was provided to you at your September 15th meeting in 2021. So next slide, please. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to consider the written comments that you received on the July 2021 draft and the comments that people spoke to you at the special meeting in October, and then discuss what changes you'd like to make to the draft Prince Frederick Master Plan. So, next slide, please. So as you know, we're in a three-phase update for the town centers. Prince Frederick is currently in the second phase Planning Commission review of the draft. Next slide, please. The master plan sets forth the vision for the town center and also sets forth the, just the overall policy. So it's a policy document, whereas the zoning regulations are actually the rules that apply to land uses, so when people want to use land, or when they propose development, certain heights, building setbacks and such. So that will come later in the update process. So we're focusing on the vision. Next, please. This slide just reviews the public workshops and meetings and surveys that we have done. We've done nine meetings and three surveys so far in the update process. Next, please. And staff has met with six of the county boards, commissions, and committees, which are listed here. Next. The draft plan is comprised of 11 chapters. We went through all the chapters except for a portion of Chapter Two and Chapter Three, the key issues and vision and land use. I'd like to note that staff was assisted by the consultants, sovereign associates, on the land use and the transportation elements, and also the key issues, purpose, and implementation chapter. You have the high-level staff summary with staff's analysis and then recommendations. And the Planning Commission at your meeting in October decided to go through chapter by chapter and then pause for each one and then take a vote on how you'd like to direct staff to make changes, if any. Next, please. So we'll start with Chapter Three, and we'll circle back to Chapter Two since it's the key issues, and key issues include land use. So there were comments received that the plan includes planning for the phases for the town center in its entirety, including Phase One and Phase Two, and the plan makes no distinction between Phase One and Phase Two. Next, please. So this is a map of the zoning of the current town center, the county zoning. So town center is noted in purple. The farm and forest district is shown in green, rural community in white, residential community in yellow, which is sort of washed out in this screen. And then employment center in gray, and rural commercial zoning is shown in red. The one-mile radius is shown in a dashed line, and that area allows for the use of transferable development rights to increase density to the allowed amount. Next, please. So the map on the left shows the current zoning, so this is a closer view. The rural community in this map is shown in tan, not white. And the one on the right shows Phase, the current town center and Phase One in the dark purple, and the Phase Two in the light purple. The Board of County Commissioners adopted the county comprehensive plan in August 2019, and that's the vision for 2040. The comprehensive plan states, "The proposed Phase Two expansion will be considered through the updating of various other plans, including the county transportation plan, Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan, and other infrastructure plans as may be appropriate." The boundaries of the two phases are shown in, there's Figure Three, which we'll get to later, but it's essentially the one, all the purple together. The Prince Frederick Phase Two expansion should occur only after these plans are updated, as well as meeting future adequate public facilities regulation considerations, including meeting established water, sewer, and public safety criteria. Expansion of the Prince Frederick Town Center will require amending the town center master plan and the zoning for the town center, end quote. Next slide, please. This is an aerial map that shows the current and proposed boundaries of Phase Two in a dark solid purple and, sorry, Phase One in dark solid and Phase Two in a dashed purple. Next, please. The graph on the left shows the acreage. So existing town center is approximately 1,550 acres. Phase One expansion is 307 acres. Phase Two, 1,239, for a total of 3,096. Next, please. So this is the Figure Three-5 that's mentioned in the comprehensive plan. It's from page 21 in Chapter Three. Shows Phase One and Phase Two in context of the land use categories in the comprehensive plan. And the town center boundaries, I should note, do not become official, even though the comprehensive plan says the different town centers shall be expanded. That's actually a formal process that you and the Board of County Commissioners will go through amending the maps, the county map, and then the town center map. So there's a question was, why look at both Phase One and Phase Two now? Phase One, I mentioned, was just over 300 acres. There's a significant amount of staff time and time that the public commits and agencies commit to reviewing and developing a master plan. And given the amount of time, the staff looked at the entire expansion so that we could do this all at once. It doesn't necessarily mean it happens all at once, but we did look at the Phase One, Phase Two in its entirety. Next, please. So as I mentioned, there was a concern about the future expansion was considered in its entirety and that there was. in its entirety and that there was no distinction between phase one and phase two in the plan. So staff's recommendation is to add information from the county comprehensive plan about the expansion and explain that the zoning map amendment process, how that would, um, have to follow to officially expand the town center boundary. So that's staff's proposal.
Thank you. Commissioners, what, what, uh, what's your will?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Jim, you were talking about the, um, TDRs that are required in the outer area around the town center to do, to do, right? Is that accurate?
That is accurate, and also there are TDRs required inside the town center also.
And those, are those numbers different?
Yes. Um, Prince, in about two thousand and fifteen, the Planning Commission and the County Commissioners moved forward and the County Commissioners adopted text amendment that provide it for a sliding scale of TDRs within town centers that have public water and sewer. So in Prince Frederick, the, it's a sliding scale. And then outside Prince Frederick, it's a standard five TDRs per additional dwelling unit. The base dense, the, the base, um, the ability to build without TDRs is one unit per acre.
So would changing over and expanding the town center itself reduce demand for TDRs or increase demand for TDRs or be neutral on that subject?
That's a great question. So with the, um, until the zoning is actually determined and the number of dwelling units per acre in the expansion areas, that would determine how many TDRs would be needed and if there were any changes to the county's current TDR formula.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Jenny, did, can you provide us with a timeline on the, um, adequate public facilities ordinance?
I will work with the Director, Mary Beth Cook. She is currently, uh, working to convene, uh, department heads and department representatives, and if she'd like, she can.
Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. Yes, we are planning a meeting. I've given the department heads a heads up that we're going to be getting together to talk about the additional sections that we wanted to add as specified in the comprehensive plan. We have not met yet, so as soon as we start meeting, then I'll have each of those departments, we'll be working on their individual sections. So really, I don't have a timeline yet, but it's underway.
And, and Mary Beth, could you explain the process on how that will work?
Sure. So we're hoping to take the, um, adequate public facilities for schools and roads, which are currently in our Calvert County zoning ordinance, out and actually make a adequate public facility section in the county code. So then, because there's going to be, um, public safety and water and sewer, and instead of having all of that in our zoning ordinance, we thought it more appropriate to put it in the county code. So it would go through a whole amendment, well, it's a new section, but it'll be similar to the text amendment process. We'll, we'll bring it to you, we'll bring it to the commissioners, we'll go through a public hearing process before it gets adopted into the code.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any other questions? We need a motion, Ms. Jen?
Yes, please.
They'll have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that on chapter three land use, uh, we accept and adopt, uh, staff's recommendation to add the information from the Calvert County Comprehensive Plan about the expansion of the zoning map amendment process that would need to be followed to officially expand Prince Frederick Town Center boundaries.
That was a great motion. Motion by Commissioner Kernan, they'll have a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Tuohy, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Commissioner Tuohy.
Yes.
Commissioner Dr. Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams is recused. She recused. She won.
Abstained.
Did you abstain?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Moving on to the next slide, please. Oh, here we are, on sixteen. There were concerns expressed about the draft land use chapter, objective one, establish land use categories rather than development districts, unquote, and that the target residential density of five to fourteen, fourteen units per acre would destroy, quote, "Destroy the village atmosphere that exists and overwhelm or replace the old late eighteen hundreds to early nineteen hundreds homes," unquote. There was the suggestion if multifamily apartments are to be built in the Old Town District, they would be more appropriate to be located along Maryland two-four with commercial space on the first floor. Next, please? So this is a map of the Prince Frederick Town Center's current development districts. There are eight. Old Town is noted in the light, uh, tan and Old Town Residential in the yellow with Old Town Transitional in the blue. There's the other ones also, Forest, which you've heard tonight, and the earlier, uh, item, and then Village Entry and Newtown. So the, next slide, please? This slide shows the proposed, um, land use category map for Prince Frederick, um, including the expansion areas. And there are five proposed categories, traditional suburban, suburban village, Main Street slash Old Town, Newtown slash mixed-use redevelopment, and the environmental conservation area in the southern portion of the town center. An example where we have planning areas that then go in the zoning to a much more refined, um, many more subcategories, that would be Solomon's Town Center. In Solomon's Town Center, um, there's, um, planning area C, and then there's, uh, the subsection, um, C-seven, and those are, um, made up of several geographic areas around the harbor, the Narrows, um, and are separated from each other by other planning areas by land and water. The draft plan, the draft Prince Frederick Plan describes three of the proposed land use categories, suburban village, Main Street slash Old Town, and the Newtown slash mixed-use redevelopment as having low to moderate residential density of five to fourteen dwelling units per acre. It envisions that Main Street and the Old Town category as ha- as being, quote, "centered on the civic and government complex and surrounding environs with residential density of five to fourteen units per acre, primarily of townhomes, apartments and tightly clustered single-family homes similar to the suburban village." Currently, Prince Frederick allows for up to fourteen dwelling units per acre in all of the planned areas except for Newtown, where currently there are up to twenty-four units per acre permitted. If we can move on to the next slide, please? I'd like to show, um, this is the, um, charrette, the six-day charrette that was held in two thousand and thirteen. It, um, identified some nodes of higher, um, of, excuse me, uh, nodes main, that included Main Street area and Maryland two-four. Next, please? The next images show, um, that these were drawn during the charrette, uh, examples of what, uh, townhouse, townhouses or apartments could look like within the town center. Next, please? This slide was presented to both the Planning Commission and the public earlier in this master plan update process, and it shows, um, current densities in the Prince Frederick Town Center. On the far left, seven dwelling units per acre as single-family detached, and then ten units per acre with attached, so townhomes, and then on the, on the far right, multifamily garden apartments at fourteen units per acre. And then I want to show you some other examples around the county. If we could go to the next slide, please? This is, um, one dwelling unit per acre, both visually photographed and then also the aerial photograph on the left. This is in Saint Leonard. Next, please? Uh, two units per acre, also in Saint Leonard. Next? Four units per acre, also in Saint Leonard. Next, moving on, we're in Prince Frederick. This is Grayson Court at eight units per acre. Next? Also eight units per acre in, um, Prince Frederick, uh, not the town center, but just outside the town center at Calvert Town. Next, please? And ten units per acre in Chesapeake Beach in the, in the town of. Next? Uh, this chart shows the current, um, zoning regulations for Prince Frederick Town Center for Old Town, Old Town Residential and Old Town transi- uh, excuse me, Transitional, and it shows, um, dwelling unit types. So the attached dwelling units, duplex, triplex, fourplex and townhouse permitted in Old Town and Old Town Transitional, detached, sorry, attached multifamilies, so apartments in Old Town Transitional, and single-family detached allowed in all, um, three districts as a conditional use. Next, please? So this is a, a close-up of the proposed, uh, land use category map for Prince Frederick showing the Main Street and Old Town area, whether it's proposed to be five to fourteen units per acre. And as I mentioned, the, uh, town center currently allows fourteen units per acre in this district. Next, please? So these are illustrations of housing types. So single-family, duplex, triplex, fourplex, multifamily, townhomes, and then apartments over businesses. So mixed use. Next, please? So options for the Planning Commission to consider. The first would be to keep the language in the draft plan as it is now, so no change. The other would be to revise the description of Main Street and Old Town so that residential types wi- within are primarily single-family detached dwellings and attached dwellings, duplex, triplex and fourplex that look like single-family detached dwellings so that the new development blends in with the historic home character of Main Street and Old Town Prince Frederick. Staff is recommending the second option. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
So floor's open for discussion. And I guess as a point of talking about it, I would agree that Old Town needs to remain, uh, with some semblance of what's there. And I think that's what example two stating, correct?
Yes.
So you need a vote on this, Jen?
We're looking for direction, yes.
A motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Jenny, are there any current examples of fourteen dwelling units per acre in Prince Frederick Town Center?
Very good question. I am not certain. Mr. Aricio just went through some of examples in the town center. Ms. Carolyn is on the line and can answer that question.
Commissioner Jones, Carolyn Sunderland, Deputy Director, like to comment.
Thank you. Carolyn, please.
Apartments, uh, off of, uh, Allnut Court and Prince Frederick Boulevard are at fourteen units per acre.
Thank you, Ms. Carolyn. So, I don't mean to cut you off.
Go ahead.
I think we came up with the number that fourteen was the max that could be built at any rate, correct? I don't think we can fit more than fourteen per acre.
The, there, um, believe the developers that have, um, developed in Prince Frederick have found it challenging to do more than fourteen units per acre.
I know we've, I'm not, I know I'm, I'm have deja vu right now because I believe what we said was we would like to see the number just be the fourteen, as opposed to fourteen up to twenty-four.
The draft master plan does say up to fourteen. It, it doesn't say anything about going to twenty-four.
I just wanted to make sure that that was still part of it, so.
Now, the question is, is, I mean, one, one of the options that's not even up here would be to consider lowering the density in the Old Town area. Um, right now, it's proposed to be five to fourteen. You could, and, and that could be something that you put the direction in the master plan, and then that would be followed through with the zoning where it would actually be spelled out, but maybe there's some density that's in between.
Okay. Commissioners, any comments? Does anyone have any direction they'd like to pursue?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we recommend, uh, reduction from fourteen to no more than five to ten dwelling units per acre.
I have a motion.
May I make a clarification? If you say no more than five to ten, um, uh, we might as well say no more than ten.
Well, I'm sorry, yes.
Cause it.
No more than ten.
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Freeland?
I would second Commissioner Freeland's motion.
Second by Commissioner Tuohy, Vice Chair Bueller.
Um, come back to me, cause I, my legislate went out. I need to go back to my slide.
Okay, okay. Do you want to slow down? We don't need to, we can, we don't need to rush.
No, come back to me if you.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Commissioner Tuohy?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
No.
And Commissioner Williams?
Abstained.
And that leads me back to Vice Chair Bueller.
No.
We have two noes. One abstention.
Three yeses.
And three yeses. Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to the next slide. There were, uh, questions and concerns expressed about the number of residential units that could be built and the growth rate. Questions included, are there limits on how many new housing units are permitted per year, either in Calvert County or Prince Frederick? The county comprehensive plan predicted a growth rate of nine percent over twenty years, uh, was the prediction. Are there ordinances to regulate that growth rate? Concerns were expressed that there is no limit on how many, uh, units can be built. I will note, and we'll get into it a little bit, about that nine percent was actually for households and not population, um, for a ten-year period. There are no limits on how many new housing units are permitted per year, either in the county or Prince Frederick. There are no ordinances that regulate the growth rate in Calvert County or Prince Frederick as a percentage of the current number of households. Next slide, please? So, um, staff noted during your special meeting that staff had conducted an analysis of, um, the developable, developability of land in the proposed expansion areas, and this information could be summarized and placed in the draft Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan. You voted to approve that analysis, um, to be summarized and included. So I just want to note here, this is, uh, a table showing the potential maximum yield, maximum number of dwelling units, uh, in existing town center, phase one, phase two and the total. That ten thousand, two hundred and four is based upon an assumption that the new expansion areas would be fourteen units per acre, whereas in fact, now that the, the draft master plan is saying for a smaller number, so, um, that's noted and the outlying areas. So it would not be that fourteen units and it would not be as high as that.
And Jenny, that's ten thousand, twenty-four.
Uh, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Kernan. The zoning hasn't been determined yet for those areas, but, uh, as I mentioned, that, that outer area, the majority of it is proposed at a, a lower rate at, um, traditional suburban, which is one unit, is, sorry, is, um, one to four units, um, per acre. Next slide, please? Uh, this is a three-dimensional graph showing the acreage in the town center and with staff's analysis what was considered highly developable acreage. The, um, Geographic Information Service Staff and Planning and Zoning Staff, um, worked a, a methodology to subtract out acreage on parcels that were floodplain, that were steep slopes of twenty-five percent or greater, as well as wetlands. So it's, um, it takes out those areas. Next slide, please?
Excuse me, Jenny?
Yes.
The potential max yield units from the previous.
Yes, if we could go, uh, back a little more.
Stay right where we are right now, though.
Oh, okay.
Is that before or after the calculation of what is highly developable, highly developable and perhaps less developable? I don't know if we have a term for this.
Moderately or?
Moderately developable. I- is that factored into the ten thousand, twenty-four number?
The ten thousand and twenty-four number includes the developability of all the acreage of the town center that is not current, current.
Those acres times fourteen.
Except for Newtown District, which currently allows twenty-four. And I'd like to note that that is assuming all the land goes to residential development, and since it's Prince Frederick Town Center or potentially the future town center, some of that acreage could go commercially, commercial. So this is like the highest amount. I also would like to note that that is, um, using TDRs. So it's assuming that, um, the properties would develop to their maximum amount and use TDRs. So, it's assuming that the properties would develop to their maximum amount and use TDRs.
Is it five TDRs?
It's five TDRs for dwelling, single-family dwellings that are clustered, are, excuse me. Five thousand for single-family dwellings. And this is off the top of my head, so I know Rachel could probably talk to this a bit later, but there's four dwelling units per acre for single-family that is clustered on an average of ten thousand or less. I believe three for townhomes and one for apartments.
So, we wouldn't need fifty thousand TDRs to do ten thousand units?
No, because that doesn't.
Definitely more than ten thousand.
That does not account for that, you, you get to develop some of the land without use of TDRs. There's a base rate that's allowed, and then above that, that's when TDRs are required. You're welcome.
Jenny, to talk about this chart a little bit, so just for clarification.
Yes.
The state of Maryland growth rate was at seven percent, correct?
Yes. So, this is the actual census counts from two thousand ten and two thousand twenty. And so, in the county comprehensive plan, there's a few tables in the land use section that show the actual population counts from the census system from nineteen thirty to two thousand ten, and then projected population that the Maryland Department of Planning did for the years twenty fifteen out through twenty forty. Based upon those projections, there's also a household projection of nine percent from twenty, where is it, twenty ten to, twenty twenty? And, no, excuse me, twenty twenty to twenty thirty. That's nine percent from twenty twenty to twenty thirty. And then it drops to one point nine percent from twenty thirty to twenty forty. The anticipated population projection showed between twenty ten and twenty twenty that the Maryland Department of Planning calculated was at six point six percent. And, as you can see from this table, the actual population projection growth rate was much, was less at four point six percent, so two percent less than projected.
What do we attribute that to, or do we?
Well, the Maryland Department of Planning does demographic projections every approximately three years, and so they look at birth rates, death rates, and migration, and they're looking for each of the jurisdictions in Maryland, the twenty-three counties plus Baltimore City. And so, Calvert was just growing slower than what was projected.
So, Tri-County's at nine point six, and Calvert's at four point six, that's?
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome. Next, please. So, the, as Mary Beth Cook mentioned earlier, the county has adequate public facilities regulations for both schools and roads. Next, please. The county comprehensive plan recommends that we take a look at water and sewer, stormwater management, solid waste and recycling, plus fire, rescue, and EMS services, and law enforcement services. Next. At this point, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Chris Hall. He is the Division Chief of the Department of Public Works, Division of Water and Sewage, and I believe the planning commission members may have questions about the, the Prince Frederick's wastewater and water systems, current capacity, and capital improvement projects. So, I believe Mr. Hall is on the line.
Chris, if you could unmute yourself and turn your camera on, please. We can see you.
Hello, I'm the Division Chief of Water and Sewer.
Hey, can you speak a little louder?
Hi, I'm the Division Chief of Water and Sewer.
Okay, do you want to give them instruction?
I believe, actually, it would be questions from the planning commission, so any questions on the Prince Frederick's current capacity for water and sewer?
Commissioners, any questions?
Yes, I, I had asked what the current capacity of the Prince Frederick system is, and if there are any capital projects in the six-year plan regarding the Prince Frederick system.
Chris, we can't hear you. Can you speak closer to your? Chris, we can't hear you. Can you speak closer to your microphone, please?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Right now, we're at seventy-eight percent capacity at our two wastewater treatment plants in Prince Frederick. So, at, at this point, we have twenty-two percent capacity remaining. With that being said, we, one of the plants is designed for another hundred thousand gallons a day, which we, we have to meet eighty, we have to be at eighty percent capacity for three years before we can enact that. So, that would, that would raise that number significantly.
So, how many additional dwelling units can you support prior to expanding the system?
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't be able to answer that right off the top of my head. Quite a few. We, we are, we're, one, one of the capital projects that we have, that we're looking into right now is an upgrade of Prince Frederick wastewater treatment plant number one. And, we've, we've been taking the town center into account with that, that we're, you know, we're, we're designing a new plant to, to match what, what flow we're going to have coming in, in the future.
In the six-year CIP, I thought I saw a very large capital project that showed up. Can you speak to that?
Yes. That, that would probably be the Prince Frederick wastewater plant upgrade.
And what was the cost?
Oh, I do not have that right in front of me right now. It's, it, we're, we're still, we're still working on that design. So, we don't have exact numbers yet. We have, you know, we're working on grants, grants through the state and things like that as well. We also have a, a capital project for a, a new storage tank, a new tower that would sit at the existing salt barn on Stafford Road. So, that would give us another hundred, I think it's a hundred and fifty thousand gallons of, of water capacity for that area.
So, so, I, I guess my first question dealt with sewer. So, what's, what is the current system capacity for potable water?
The current system capacity right now is about, we, we have, we have enough storage for about one point one million gallons per day at any given time.
And how many gallons a day are we using if we have that capacity?
We are using probably close to, probably not even half of that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Freeland, do you want him to circle back with answers?
Not at this time.
Okay. Steve Jones speaking. If you could, Mr. Freeland doesn't, isn't requesting answers immediately, but when you get those answers, can you email staff so we can get the answers to those questions?
No problem.
Mr. Chairman, one clarification on that, and maybe I misunderstood his question. But if I understood the question, he wanted to know how many dwelling units, X number of sewer capacity or X number of water capacity would generate. It would depend on the type of dwelling unit and the number of, of residents and children and all that sort of thing involved. So, I, I don't think there is a, a flat number that we could pick and say, well, this is the number of units that would be built till we know which kind of unit is being built and know how many people are going to occupy, or likely to occupy.
A definitive number. We can't give a definitive.
I would also point out that Prince Frederick is a commercial, allows for commercial uses, and there's equivalent dwelling unit counts for the, the usage for those types of uses. And that the Department of Public Works and Water and Sewer presented to the Board of County Commissioners yesterday on the proposed CIP project, so that slides, those slides are available from the Board of County Commissioners' agenda page, and the, it was recorded, so that's available on the county's website.
Any other questions, commissioners? What else do you need, Ms. Jen?
At that point, it was just to have Mr. Hall available to answer questions about, that the planning commissioners might have about water and sewage. So, at, at this point, I, if you have no further questions for Mr. Hall, we can proceed on to the next slide. Thank you, Mr. Hall. So, slide.
Get that man some better equipment.
He's on his iPhone.
So, circling back to the question, the summary of the concerns, and it was about the number of residential units that could be built and the growth rate, and the fact that the county does not have regulations regarding limiting the number of dwelling units per year, and how many dwelling units could be built. So, staff's recommendation is no change to the draft plan. Mr. Chairman?
Jenny, can you repeat that? What do you need right now? Do you need anything?
Staff's recommending that there be no change made to the draft master plan regarding growth rate or dwelling units. So, unless the planning commission members would like to make a change, that's staff's recommendation, that no change be made to the master plan.
Commissioners, what's your will? No change or change? None being heard?
None, no change.
No change. I don't think we need to take a motion on that.
No motion, okay. Mr. Mattingly agrees. Slide forty, thank you. So, comments were received expressing concern about the proposed environmental conservation area. That's in, located in the southwest portion of the town center, west of Maryland two four. I'll bring up a map here shortly. And, there were concerns expressed about the classification, that it would severely restrict or prohibit development, and there were questions why the landowner's property is being designated when there are other properties within the town center master plan area that contain similar environmental features. Next, please. So, the environmental conservation area, this is taken directly from the draft Prince Frederick master plan. So, the draft plan notes that this area in the southwest quadrant of the town center has significant environmental value as the headwaters of the Parker's Creek and approximately a hundred and forty acres of undisturbed forest south of Westlake Boulevard. The plan states the county should develop an environmental preservation strategy for this area with the goal of keeping at least two-thirds of the area undeveloped through such techniques as a forest conservation bank easement, steep slopes, and stream buffer requirements. Next, please. So, this is a close-up of the proposed categories for town, Prince Frederick Town Center, and so the environmental conservation area is shown in the dotted green area with a tan background. So, currently, the draft plan indicates that, that this be environmental conservation area and traditional suburban, in the area that's currently Forest District, the southern portion of Forest District. Forest District actually starts just south of Maryland two thirty-one and includes that suburban village in the darker tan. And it's described as a low-density area, one dwelling unit to four dwelling units per acre. Currently, the Prince Frederick zoning ordinance allows up to fourteen units per acre. The comparable land use category in the draft Prince Frederick plan is suburban village, which would allow five to fourteen dwelling units per acre. Next, please. So, this is a map showing the current Prince Frederick zoning category, the Forest District, so the area from south of Maryland two thirty-one and on the west side of Maryland two four. Goes all the way south to Commerce Boulevard, which includes like Mr. Tire area, that portion is in the town center. Next, please. So, the options for the planning commission to consider include keeping the language in the draft plan as it is now, so no change, revising the map to reduce the area of the environmental conservation area, and to expand the traditional suburban land use category along Maryland two four. That area tends not to have the steeper slopes than the area further back. Or revise the map to reduce the area of the environmental conservation area and replace traditional suburban land use category with the suburban village land use category, so that would increase the potential number of dwelling units in that area. So, staff's recommendation is you consider options one and two. I'll turn it over to the chairman.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Jenny, is, is commercial development along the Route Four corridor allowed in, in that area?
That's a great question. Unless one of the staff who's with us tonight has an immediate answer, I have the land use chart. So, I'm looking at the current Prince Frederick zoning ordinance, and we're in Forest District, and commercial greenhouses are permitted, of course, farm, farm-type uses, nursery, veterinary hospital or clinic for both small animal and livestock, a variety of residential uses are permitted, agricultural machinery, sales, service, supplies, antique sales. There's a, let's see, home improvement center, less than twenty-five thousand square feet is currently permitted in Forest District. The larger centers are not. Retail commercial building with drive-up facility, less than twenty-five thousand is permitted. Retail commercial, less than twenty-five thousand is permitted in Forest District. Conditional uses, retail commercial with commercial sale or display area, outdoors display, that's conditional, Waterman's Market's conditional. Commercial trade school, corporate headquarters, more than five thousand. So, there's quite a variety of commercial uses that are currently permitted in Prince Frederick's Forest District.
So, would either option that we select this evening affect commercial development?
Let me turn back to the environmental conservation area description. If we could go back a couple of slides, I think, next one back, so here. It doesn't, the current master plan language does not talk about, like the other ones do, about the type of residential or commercial development, so. Whereas, for example, the mixed-use redevelopment, New Town, excuse me, talks about commercial demand, the area being commercial, and potentially as commercial demand wanes, turning that into multifamily housing. So, no, this one does not have any mention of commercial.
Although, if you, if you did the arithmetic, you take the hundred and forty acres undisturbed, and if you folded that into what you've said otherwise, the amount that's left anyway is pretty small. So, I don't know how much commercial you're going to have down there anyway.
The land is challenged, there's some portions of the Forest District that's, has steep slopes currently. Probably the, the flatter land is located up near two four or on the far side beyond the ravines on the western portion. But you bring up a good point. But you bring up a good point. It's, it's silent on types of uses other than trying to conserve it.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Jen, what are we looking for?
Direction on what the Planning Commission would like staff to do with the environmental conservation area. And it could be something that's not up on the options that staff provided.
Commissioners, any motion?
I would make a motion that we leave it with no change.
Second.
Do we need to vote on this?
Yes, there's a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Toohey, second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Abstain.
Mr. Williams abstains. Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to the next slide. So there were concerns expressed about high-density residential development being allowed. The master plan sets forth broad categories of land uses. It'll be the zoning regulations that actually establish those densities. So master plan provides the range and what's envisioned. The rules will be in the zoning ordinance. And the, the intent is not to increase the density, but beyond what is allowed, except for a limited area around the community college. A low to medium density of five to fourteen units per acre. And the draft plan recommends that the New Town District be downzoned from twenty-four units per acre to fourteen units per acre. Next, please. While the master plan sets the broad categories of land uses, as I mentioned, it'll be the zoning ordinance that actually regulate how many dwelling units per acre. For example, in the suburban village, that's the darker orange, is described as low to medium. It could be divided into subcategories so that further regulate where different types of densities occur within the town center. Next. So staff's recommendation is to add text describing the roles of the master plan and the zoning regulations. Mr. Chairman?
Wants to add text describing these two?
Staff will come back with draft texts.
That's why I'm laughing.
At your direction, we will come back with text that describes the roles of each.
Commissioners, any questions? Any motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we follow staff's recommendation and ask them to add text describing the roles of the master plan and zoning regulations.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Toohey, second by Commissioner Kernan. Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ma'am?
Next slide, please. There were concerns expressed that the Prince Frederick master plan needs to have tighter restrictions on growth, not to allow the growth rate to climb. As I mentioned, the master plan sets forth the broad categories and the zoning will establish the density. The Planning Commission can change the proposed land categories. So the maps, the map that we looked at prior or earlier in the presentation, you could decide to change those areas. Or you could decide to change the proposed densities. So we've talked about low and medium density ranges, up to fourteen units per acre. The comprehensive plan directs staff to take a look at adding additional services to the APF, adequate public facilities regulations. Director Cook had talked about that earlier. So if we can move on to the next and skip it, because this is a duplication of the previous slide bullets, thank you. So staff's recommendation, it's for your discussion about whether to change the land use categories where they're located or to change the density ranges that are mentioned. And that hearkens back to that land use category map that we previously showed, and it's in the draft master plan. Old Town, let me, I'll go through those categories again.
Jenny, do you need a break?
I need a drink of water. Thank you.
Take your time.
Thank you. We're looking at page three dash six through, three dash eight in the master plan. And that includes the traditional suburban, which is one to four dwelling units per acre. Suburban village, five to fourteen dwelling units per acre. The Main Street, Old Town, five to fourteen units. And I believe we just got direction from the Planning Commission to reduce that down to, I believe, ten. New Town in mixed use, which is the higher density and commercial area and.
And that's five to fourteen?
I believe so. Although it doesn't say it in the text, it does say it in the, on the map as low density, five to fourteen units per acre. And then environmental conservation area, which we just talked about, which doesn't, turn back to the map. Doesn't specify number of units per acre, but trying to preserve two thirds of that area. So you've already taken action by one of your previous votes about reducing the density in Old Town and Main Street to that ten units per acre. So you could consider that for the other areas. And you could also consider revising the proposed map for your discussion.
Open for discussion, Commissioners. Any questions? None being heard. Any motions? Be bashful.
Motion to, to cap all of the, they're not districts. Help me out, Jenny. They are.
Category, uh, land use categories.
Land use categories to a maximum of ten dwelling units.
Motion by Commissioner Freeland. Do I have a second?
So that would be for all of Prince Frederick, correct? Second, Matt.
Second by Commissioner Toohey.
Can I ask a question before we?
Please.
Does that include the expansion as well?
The expansion area is at a lower density, except for the area around the community college.
That answer your question?
It does.
Have a Commissioner, by Commissioner Freeland, a second by Commissioner Toohey. Vice Chair Bueller?
No.
Commissioner Kernan?
No.
Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
No.
Commissioner Williams?
Abstain.
Is it tie?
Failed.
Failed, okay. Motion failed. Do I have another motion? Take your time. Jen, can we defer this?
You can defer. You can also ask staff to come back with perhaps other suggestions if you'd like to have us.
Do I have a motion to defer and come back with other recommendations?
I'm moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kernan, second by Commissioner Toohey. Vice Chair Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to the next slide. So we've gone through the summary and staff's analysis. I'd like to ask if there are any topics that you read in the public comments or heard during, when the public spoke on October twenty-sixth that you would like to discuss or if you have any additional questions for this evening.
Jen, would this include the comments that we received recently?
You could ask staff to look at those comments and if you have any questions or would like us to work on anything, please let us know.
We received a comment from Mr. Estes. I just want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to read that. And you gave a, a good response, so.
I'd also like to note, you received comments the day of your meeting on the twenty-sixth from Ms. Rundevo, Mrs. Rundevo, excuse me, and Ron Clotta. And then, yes, those two came in, I believe, that very day.
So there's been some discussion, Commissioners, also about, you know, when we were receiving comments and we're trying to take them, you know, as late as we possibly can, but at some point, we have to have a cutoff date. And so we're kind of, we're in conversation now trying to work through that. And my, my thought was Monday by noon. That's, that's just off the top of my head. But it's something I, I ask you to think about, and we need to come up with a, a policy that I think we all can live with.
And I would note, for that's for the time that, excuse me, that there's, during these master plan, comprehensive plan updates, there's certain times where there's public comment that's requested. And then there's a, you know, we receive comments by September first or October first, and we provide all those to you. Then there's the time when we're sort of in between. You're still reviewing this particular draft. We haven't moved on to the next draft, and you're still receiving comments. So it would be a policy for like this type of situation. I will also note, Mr. Mattingly can correct me, but when you go to public hearing, there's an official public record time where it starts when the advertisement is made in the newspaper that the Planning Commission will be holding a public hearing. And then it goes until the Planning Commission closes the public record, which could be the night of the public hearing. Or if you chose to extend public comment for a week, two weeks, a month, then that official record then closes at that point in time. Any comments that come in after that time are not considered part of the official record. But staff does keep those as part of our project file. Yes. So this would be a policy for the, the situation where we're, like we're in now, where it's not in an official public record period.
Jenny, I just had a question. I, I don't, I'm not trying to feign stupidity. But there was concern expressed that the Prince Frederick master plan needs to have tight restrictions on growth to not allow the growth rate to climb. I understand what the words are saying. But operationally, the zoning is going to control how much you can put in any given area, the density. So I don't know what this really means. Does this mean that if, if, if one of these areas is growing to the maximum limit permitted by the zoning, doesn't change what the big picture is? Are, are we going to start having limits to how many dwellings could be built in that area? I, I, it just, it seems contradictory to me. Maybe I'm looking at it wrongly.
It's a complex, you know, issue. The zoning does allow, that's where the development capacity from the Maryland Department of Planning comes in, where we look at what is permitted by the current zoning. So with the current zoning, you could get a maximum, assuming that everything developed and it developed to its maximum potential, that's the number of dwelling units. Perhaps it is regarding the, the amount of growth that there was the question about a cap on the number of units permitted per year. And I believe some jurisdictions do allow that, that they have, you, you could do a thousand permits or five hundred permits. And after that, that number's reached, that closes the, the issuance of building permits for that year.
Isn't that already controlled by the number of seats that you have available in the schools?
The adequate, yes, the adequate public facilities. When a school is over capacity, we, we delay the approv, well, we, you delay the approval of the subdivision or in the case of perhaps townhouses or apartments, the, the development project until either the schools are adequate or six years have passed. And that six-year timeframe is tied to the county's capital improvements program with the idea that if the county, if we recognize the fact that a school's over capacity, that gives enough time to plan for and construct a school or in addition to a school.
Which goes back, as I understand, and I don't want to speak for the law, but my understanding when we first researched that, you were not permitted, in most jurisdictions, to simply say, hey, we don't want this or we don't want that. It had to be tied to the, to the zoning, et cetera, so that the property rights of the people who lived in that area, as long as they conform to the zoning, could, could use their property. And, and you, you see what I'm getting at here? I, I just, I, I think it could be worded better. I, I guess that's what I'm trying to say. And I'll, well, just throw it in as a fortuitous thing, like that nine percent thing. We know that nine, and you say it, but we know that nine percent is not for any given year or any, any small group of years. It's for a whole, what, two decades?
That nine percent was for, projected for a decade.
Right, right.
Yeah, it was not the, it was not the annual growth rate. Thanks for mentioning that. It was for the decade. And the, the adequate public facilities, so it manages the rate of growth. It doesn't put a cap on the number of units per year.
And I think the important part of that, Doc, if I'm hearing you right, is we just want to make sure that the message isn't nine percent.
Right, right. That's, that's all I'm, I'm getting.
Yeah.
What is the annual growth rate?
Of, for the decade from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, it was four point six percent for the county.
When they gave the projected growth rate of nine percent for a decade, did they give a reason why the growth rate might accelerate so dramatically? I mean, that would be a doubling of our, of the, the prior decade's growth.
It's rather interesting in the comprehensive plan. Just a moment. Happen to have it tabbed for tonight. So I mentioned, so I mentioned that the county's population in, that's noted in the comprehensive plan goes back to nineteen thirty. And in this table that's on page three dash eleven, it notes the growth rate per decade. So from the nineteen thirties, from, for that decade, the growth rate was ten percent. For the nineteen forties, it was fifteen point four percent. The nineteen fifties, thirty point eight percent. The nineteen sixties, thirty point seven percent. The nineteen seventies, sixty seven point five percent. The nineteen eighties, forty eight point three percent. The nineteen nineties, forty five point one percent. And I will note that during those decades, the county either had the title of the fastest-growing or the second fastest-growing county in the state. That's not absolute numbers, but that's percentage.
Need to get those politicians in this room. I'm just kidding.
I think a few of them are. The twenty, the, the decade of the two thousands was at nineteen percent. And then the twenty-ten, we just noted, was four point six percent, which was less than the projected six point six percent. So you can see that county's population growth rate has risen dramatically and then has reduced over the last couple of decades.
And we're below the tri-county area and below the state of Maryland growth rate?
Yes.
Substantially. Thank you, Jen.
At this point, I believe we're at to the next slide, if there's no other questions or comments. So moving forward, the Planning Commission, you've given us some direction on making changes to the draft master plan. At your October twenty-sixth meeting, you wanted, you voted for staff to make those changes and come back to you. So we have other things based upon that October twenty-sixth meeting, which includes coming up with draft language on climate impact for chapter four. So we'll be working on that draft language. Once you receive the revised draft for your consideration, you can make additional changes to it. Or if you're satisfied with it, you would then vote to make it your recommended plan to take to public hearing. It's not the plan you're recommending to the county. take to public hearing. It's not the plan you're recommending to the county commissioners, it's just your public hearing draft. At that time, we will schedule a public hearing. We have to provide the state at least 60 days' advance notice so that they can review the draft, because some of these items will, we have lots of state roads in the town center, so they can have the opportunity to review that. You hold a public hearing, people can provide written comments or speak at the hearing, at which point, you'll either close the record that evening or continue it for a set amount of time, and then consider those comments, perhaps if you'd like, make changes to that draft, and then vote on a plan that you would then approve, and send that forward to the Board of County Commissioners for consideration. Next slide. So, the board must hold a public hearing prior to adopting the plan, and also if they, if they modify it, so they must hold a public hearing before adopting or modifying the plan. They can also choose to remand the plan back to the planning commission for reconsideration, for you to make changes. That has happened once for, I believe, the 2004 plan, for one action item in the plan. And then, the Board of County Commissioners could also disapprove the plan. The board would hold at its public hearing, that would be another opportunity for agencies and the public to provide comment, and then the board ultimately would decide whether or not to adopt or modify the plan or those other options also. The last slide is how people can learn about the master plan update process, which is, we have a project website, the Town Center Update webpage, and then from there, they can either choose Prince Frederick or Dunkirk. People can sign up for news flashes, so those are email messages that they receive. The information is how to sign up for that, it's on the county's main page, and they can also follow on Facebook for updates on the master plan process. So that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones, if we're ready, we can move on to the next item?
Please.
Jenny's up for it as well, you need a drink?
Yes.
Jenny, take, yeah, take, take, take a minute, take a minute. Seriously, Doc, just relax.
Well, okay.
We're gonna be here a while, so it's okay.
Next item is Item 6B, the Dunkirk Town Center Master Plan Update, presenting again, Jenny Plomo Welker, AICP Long Range Planner.
I promise this will be much shorter. So, for the, I'm sorry, which town center did you say?
Dunkirk.
Thank you. So you have a staff's memorandum from February, and attached to that is staff's memo from January 26th. We hosted on behalf of the planning commission, and the chairman and vice chairwoman attended that public meeting. It was an informational meeting on December 6th. It was a virtual meeting. We had 35 people attend, not counting planning commission staff or the guest speakers. We had four guest speakers, including Dr. Lazor, who spoke about, he's a water quality specialist with the University of Maryland Extension. Tamara Blake Wallace talked about our bikeways grant, and she'll be talking about that shortly this evening. Danita Bunchisery from Economic Development spoke on how businesses choose locations, and Matt Comers from the Environmental Health Department, Environmental Health Division of the Health Department, also spoke. The meeting was recorded, so that's available on the Dunkirk Town Center website. Updates since the January memo. The communications and media relations finalized and released the two breaking news videos. Unfortunately, we are not able to show that, show them to you this evening. There is one on Dunkirk Outdoor Recreational Amenities, and the person behind the door tonight, Daryl Baxter, is the star of that video, so if you have not seen it yet, I highly recommend it.
Daryl, good work.
We can hear the muffled thank you through the walls in the door. I will note that the communications and media relations staff provides us statistics, Facebook statistics after one week, and it was viewed by 11,050 people, the Facebook post, and of that, the video was viewed 6,379 times.
Amazing.
There were 120 reactions, like likes or loves, 17 comments, and 49 shares. I will note that one of the people commenting said, "This guy should be on some known news station." I will also note, one of my coworkers fam, friends, her son noted that, "Why isn't that man wearing a helmet?" Oops. So, the other video was posted, the, it's an interview that Daryl does with Dr. Lazor on septic systems, so it's an informational video. Unfortunately, I didn't bring the statistics with me, but it definitely does not have the number of views or likes as the recreational amenities one. That one is up for, on the county's, both of them are up on the county's YouTube site. So, that's our update for Dunkirk. I will note that the bikeways planning public meeting was held on January 11th, and Tamara Blake Wallace will be reporting on that next. So that concludes my update. I would like to just note that we couldn't do this without the communications and media relations staff.
I don't know what, this will be, I guess, a kudos to the commissioners and to communications and PR, because that, it's taken to another level. It's just a whole new ballgame. I mean, these are professional-grade commercials, and the Facebook posts are just amazing, so good work.
That concludes my presentation.
Jenny, thank you very much.
You're quite welcome. Up next?
I owe you a bottle of water.
I believe there's Prince Frederick tap water in the back room.
Mr. Tamara.
And commissioners, next item is Item 6C, Dunkirk and Prince Frederick Town Center Bikeways Grant Feasibility Workshop. Presenting this evening is Tamara Blake Wallace.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I won't be before you long. You know, we are definitely working on trying to make our town centers a more walkable, bikeable areas. So we, just a little background, we've received the bikeways grant from the state of Maryland, from MDOT, and we have been working on that grant. We've held two workshops. The second workshop, which Jenny mentioned, was held on January 11th. The consultant, Jamie Kendrick, from Mead and Hunt, hosted, well, he presented at that public, public meeting, and it covered the Prince Frederick and Dunkirk Bikeways Network Plan. The meeting was held virtually and attended by 27 people. That included some staff members and the consultant. A copy of that slideshow was given to you. We're not going to go through the slideshow, but if you have any questions, I will take those questions. The meeting was recorded, so it is online, if anybody would like to view for the meeting. Our next steps for the bikeway grant, the consultant at this time is finalizing the technical report with the design layouts and impact analysis from the comments and whatnot that we received as to what would be the most feasible bike routes that people wanted to see for those town centers, and after we get that report, we have some steps that we want to take to try to get that implemented. The first would be to present the technical report to the planning commission and the commissioners, for you all to see exactly what we have planned for those town centers. We would continue our coordination between our department planning and zoning and public works and state highway to coordinate those major projects. We'd integrate those standards and road designs into the town center master plans and zoning regulations, and we would incorporate bike lanes into resurfacing projects for DPW and SJA. Those would be some of our lower-cost items that we could do, like immediately, with resurfacing projects. It would just be basically like a restriping method that would basically take place. And we would update the county standards for the roadway designs. So those are what we're working on now. We're waiting to get that technical report back from the consultant, then we will be back before you with a presentation. So, if you have any questions?
Tamara, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Any comments? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well done. Mr. Conover?
Just a reminder, the commissioners, it's 8:40. There is a policy that the chair may call a break at 9 o'clock if they desire. Next item is our items for discussion and information. This is Item 7A, text amendment case TA 2102, amendments to the Prince Frederick, Lesby, and Solomon's Town Center ordinance to increase transferable developmental rights or TDR requirements. Presenting this evening is Rachel O'Shea. Rachel, and I'll do your PowerPoint for you.
Do we have any recusals?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to recuse myself as well.
Okay, Lisa, we'll put you in the, I guess it's called the waiting room again?
Yes, and I will accept that room once I get it on my screen.
Commissioner Wilson, we'll get you in just a minute, sir.
Commissioner Williams is in the break room.
Okay.
Where? Waiting room. Give me one second, Rachel.
Take, take your time.
Go ahead, Rachel. Can you see it?
Yes, great. Thank you, Paul. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Rachel O'Shea. I'm the zoning planner. This evening, I'm going to be discussing the text amendment case 21-02. This is amendments to the Prince Frederick, Lesby, and Solomon's Town Center ordinances to increase the transferable development right, TDR requirements. I am going to quickly read through the memo as it gives some background and history of how we got here today, since so much time has passed. Planning zoning staff gave a presentation on the history of the TDR committee and the TDR sliding scale to the Board of County Commissioners at a work session on November 16th of 2021. The BOCC directed staff to move forward with a text amendment to increase the TDR requirement based off the previous text amendment from 2020 that did not move forward at that time, which proposed an increase based on the number of bedrooms to the TDR requirement. At the planning commission regular meeting on December 15th of 2021, the planning commission, before reviewing the proposed text amendment, requested to conduct the same work session on the history of the TDR committee and the TDR sliding scale. This work session took place on January 19th of 2020. The Prince Frederick Town Center, the Village Edge District, and the Village Residential Office District of the Lesby Town Center and Solomon's Town Center are designated as transfer zones for use of TDRs. Purchase of TDRs is required for homes constructed in these zones. This does not include workforce housing, bona fide affordable housing, or continuing care retirement communities. A text amendment is being proposed to the Prince Frederick, Lesby, Solomon's Town Center zoning ordinances to increase the TDR requirement by number of bedrooms and by dwelling type. So, next slide, please, on the PowerPoint. Next slide, please. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to review and to discuss the proposed text amendment case 2102, to change transferable development right TDR requirements for residential dwellings within the town centers of Prince Frederick, Lesby, and Solomon's. Staff is looking for direction for the next step in the text amendment process, which is to distribute the text amendment to receive agency comment. Next slide, please. Text amendment 21-02 is a proposed amendment to the Prince Frederick, Lesby, and Solomon's Town Center zoning ordinances. This amendment proposes to increase the requirement of the TDRs based on the number of bedrooms. This will affect Prince Frederick Town Center, the Village Edge District, and Village Residential Office District of the Lesby Town Center, as well as the Solomon's Town Center. Next slide, please. Planning commissioners, you have seen this chart before at our work session in January. This shows you our current TDR sliding scale, which is five for single-family detached above 10,000 square feet, three for single-family detached less than 10,000 square feet, two for attached dwellings, and then one for multi-family dwellings. The proposal for the TDR sliding scale is to go to a 5 for 33 to 1 scale. Next, I'm going to review the proposed text changes to the different town center ordinances. Next slide, please. For the Prince Frederick Town Center zoning ordinance, this affects Chapter 3 site design and permitted number of dwelling units, the requirements for the use of development rights. Prince Frederick is designated a transfer zone. Purchase of five transfer development rights, TDRs, is required for each single-family detached dwelling on lots averaging greater than 10,000 square feet gross. This will change to four TDRs for each single-family detached dwelling on lots averaging less than or equal to 10,000 square feet, changing to three TDRs for each attached dwelling, and then three TDRs for each three-bedroom multi-family attached units, two TDRs for each two-bedroom multi-family attached units, and one TDR for each one-bedroom multi-family attached unit. This is, of course, over the base one dwelling unit per acre. Next slide, please. I'm not going to read through this again, but this, it basically shows the text changes that will be needed for the Lesby Town Center zoning ordinance, which affects Article 4 Transfer Zone District designated transfer zones. And basically, it's the same, same basic language, just changing the numbers of the TDRs required by dwelling type. Next slide, please. And again, this is going to go over the required text changes for the Solomon's Town Center zoning ordinance, which affects Section 5-1.08 Residential Density, minimum lot size and lot width requirements in the Solomon's Town Center, application of transferable development rights, TDRs. So again, it's just showing the new language in red, that's changing the numbers of the sliding scale, and what language will be removed in the bold line that's striked out. This appears twice in the Solomon's Town Center zoning ordinance, so this is the second section of the Solomon's Town Center zoning ordinance that is affected. Next slide, please. This is Section 6-12.07, the sub-area C1 upper form base code, permitted land uses, C residential uses. Again, the language changes that would be needed to change the sliding scale. Next slide, please. So we come to recommendation, the next step. Staff is requesting direction to distribute the proposed text amendment 21-02 for agency comment. Staff, at the conclusion of the agency comment period, would prepare comments and return to the planning commission to review those at a future work session, and then at that time, you know, the planning commission would be able to further discuss the proposal and any comments received, and make a decision on how to move forward with the text amendment process. I will now open the floor if the planning commission has any questions.
Any questions, commissioners? I have one, but does anyone have one?
I do have one.
Yes, sir.
I'm wondering why we're looking at doing this just for the south half of the county. Is there any reason to not do it countywide, or?
The TDR sliding scale only affects our town centers that are on public sewer, so those would be Prince Frederick, Lesby, and Solomon's.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it.
Good pickup, though. So Rachel, one of the things that came up the last time this was brought up, this went before the TDR committee, and it was, I'm assuming, decided that it was to be left alone. It then went before the BOCC, and it was a tie vote. Am I correct so far? It then went before the BOCC, and it was a tie vote. Am I correct so far?
When, after, after the TDR sliding scale was discussed with the TDR Committee, staff took the recommendations of the TDR Committee to the BOCC for an additional work session. And the BOCC voted to move forward with the text amendment to increase the TDR sliding scale requirement.
But what was recommended by the TDR Committee?
The TDR Committee recommended that the sliding scale not be adjusted at this time until the complete draft of the, at least the Prince Frederick Master Plan had been presented and discussed between the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners, so that then, essentially, hopefully, the boards would have a better understanding of the implications moving forward of how the TDR sliding scale would affect the town centers moving forward.
So in effect, if we made it, we would be going against the TDR Committee if we make a change other than what they said, right?
Yes. I mean, essentially, the TDR's recommendation at the beginning was that, you know, they would not recommend proposing a change to the TDR sliding scale at this time until the Prince Frederick Master Plan was reviewed by both boards.
Okay, so, under recommendations, it states a request, direction to distribute for agency comment, or we could vote on this either to approve or disapprove now, correct?
You could defer it. You could defer the item, or you could decline it moving forward.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions? Do I have any comments, or do I have any motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to send this forward for agency comment.
Do I have a second? None being heard. Do I have another motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we wait on the Prince Frederick Master Plan to be completed before we take any action on this.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan. Do I have a second? None being heard. I will entertain another motion.
These are the only two choices we have, Mr. Chairman?
You can, well...
We could decline to move it forward, she said. Move it forward, or send it out.
Those are recommended.
Those are only recommended.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, let me try one a little broader than that. I move that we do not recommend changes in the current TDR schedule at this time.
Motion by Commissioner Holler.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bueller. Vice Chair Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
No.
Commissioner Toohey?
No.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes. Your vote?
Yes.
Pass three.
If you could just take anything more for Rachel.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Rachel.
You're right.
I just need a minute to get Commissioner Williams back.
Yeah?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. She'll be back in within the next thirty seconds. There she comes. Commissioner Williams, can you hear us? You're muted, ma'am.
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Commissioners, that moves us on to Item 8, Items of Interest. We have the Item 8A Site Plan and Subdivision Applications. Are there any questions on that this evening? Hearing none, that moves us on to Item 9, Public Comment. At this time, we will open, Chair will open the meeting up to public comment according to Calvert County Ordinance Number 5121. And the Planning Commission shall, or first, request comment from those attending in person, and then from those attending virtually. Those who are commenting as an individual will be allotted two minutes to speak, and those individuals representing an organization will be given five minutes to speak. Staff, myself, will be keeping time, and I'll be giving a thirty-second warning. Commissioner Jones, I was, received a call earlier of one individual who would like to speak during public comment, Ms. Myra Gallin. I don't know if anybody else in the audience would also like to, if you'd like to just...
Ms. Gallin, please come up. Please state your name and address, ma'am.
Myra Gallin. I represent Calvert Citizens United Incorporated and Huntington, Maryland.
Yes, ma'am.
That's where I live. First of all, my head wants to pop off here with what's going on. We are just ramming this thing through without any, any indication of water and sewer. So I went and I got the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance from the Maryland Department of Planning. So when I called them, I asked for the Secretary's office. And I said, "How important is it that these master plans have to be filed immediately?" She goes, "I told you this." I said, "That is the way the county is acting, that the master plans have to get done. Mark Willis wants them done." Here's what they told me. There is no timeline for master plans. You can take all the time you want. And I asked a couple months ago that you all put these master plans on hold until the lawsuits with the county have been adjudicated. Now, we are, CO, CCU has appealed to COA, the Court of Appeals. The Ethics Commission has appealed to COSA, and they will get a hearing probably in May, late April, early May. I've asked you, and the citizens have pleaded with you, please do not ram this through until we have adjudication, total adjudication, from the courts, and we know where we are. Nobody says anything. So, I just want you to know where you all have put us, as we are the third, the smallest county in the state of Maryland, and the eighth smallest county in the United States. There are five counties in Rhode Island. Three of them are smaller than us, and two are larger. And that's how you determine how this small this county is. You're building it out, and you have no idea of sewer capacity. Now, let me just explain to you what this nice little plan says. It says that, and I'm gonna read from the plan. Sewer capacity is expressed in terms of hydraulic capacity, which we all know. That means millions of gallons going through the system per day. And it talks about the plant, the sewer plant. However, this does not, this is from this document. However, this does not provide a full description of availability. Just because you have forty percent left, or whatever amount you all determine, it doesn't mean you have availability to use that up for houses. Here's what it says. "It is constrained by state regulations regarding the treatment of sewer and waste." The more houses you put in, the more large businesses, the more asphalt you build, and, you know, all of that is going to be, but the houses are going to regulate the sewer. And you all are talking here tonight, Dick Holler's saying, you know, how many square feet for the house, bedrooms? That's not the way you determine sewage. It's done by, in your application for permit, how many bedrooms, how many bathrooms? And you all have left that out entirely. You don't even ask. You just are figuring out TDRs based on bedrooms. It has to be bedrooms and bathrooms. So, essentially, sewer capacity is viewed as the weak link in development. The weak link, that is right-written and highlighted and quotes in this plan. Providing adequate capacity at the sewer... How many?
Thirty.
Okay. "At the sewer treatment plant involves expensive improvements, the costs of which are borne by local taxes." Obviously, that means that taxpayers are gonna foot the bill. So you all are making all these plans, and you don't even have a sewer base for the plans that you're making. I don't understand this, and neither do the citizens that are gonna be on the hook with paying taxes. Okay, thank you very much.
Finish your sentence, ma'am.
Okay. They're gonna be on the hook. Look, election is coming up. You all are gonna have to answer. The people running are gonna have to answer for that. That's all I'm gonna say. Thank you very much for your time and your attention.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody?
Anyone else from the public in person like to speak? I don't see anybody.
No, okay.
Are there any, is there anyone from attending virtually that would like to speak?
We have one, yeah, Paul.
I don't see anybody with their hands raised, sir. Move on, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Item 10, Adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
From Boo?
Second.
Commissioner Toohey, second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey?
Yeah.
Mr. Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yeah.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.